Good to start. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome and thank you once again with to be with us virtually. I will call this meeting of Montgomery County School Board to order at seven o'clock on May 5th, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, in this liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item will be adopting your agenda. May I have a motion to adopt our agenda?
Send me. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? We have an agenda. Now, the next item is paying our bills. May I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills?
Send move.
Thank you. Motion and second. Thank you. Any questions regarding our bills? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve the payment of our bills. Next item is part of our business meeting, and it starts with our approving our special education annual plan. Anything you need to add, Dr. Meyer, before I make the motion?
Yeah, and I just want to start off by real quick, just letting everyone know that, and remember, this is Teacher Appreciation Week, and just letting all of our teachers out there know how grateful we are for all you do and everything you've been doing, especially during this time to continue the education of our kids, and also that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and just want to let everyone know that we'll be sending additional resources out to families about student mental health this month as well. I just wanted to get those quick notes in there, Ms. Karan first. But yes, the Special Education Annual Plan, we emailed the annual plan to the board, members, on April 6th for review. We're asking you to actually approve this plan tonight. Dr. Walker is in our meeting tonight. If you have any additional questions?
May I have a motion to approve the special education annual plan as presented?
Send move.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any questions, any discussion for members? Any questions to Dr. Walker? Hearing none. May I have all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve our special education annual plan. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. The next, we have a budget letter. First, Mr. Krantz is here to provide you with an update on the budget planning and a request from the Board of Supervisors to defer some items in our request, and so I'm asking you to approve this letter tonight in order for us to move forward. But we have some updated numbers for you in terms of the state revenue projections and also federal and then local as well, and then we looked at our carryover also. So, Mr. Krantz, would you go over this with this word of the board, please?
Yes, sir. So what we did, Board, School Board members, is we looked at what were the revenues, and you can see in the first column, this is what was adopted and submitted to the Board of Supervisors. Our total state revenues were 2.6 million, federal revenues, and this is what was the increase, $416,000 increase, and then our local was 1.55 million. In analyzing the best data that we have available today from the COW tools in the state and just everything else that's been available, we're predicting that our state revenues excluding ADMs will go down by $1.06 million, which will bring it down to 1.6 new money. CARES Act, which we talked about at the last meeting, is stimulus money of 1.5 million. Our federal revenues, we projected 416 increase. We're going to maintain that. The local of 1.55, we deducted out because that's been set up as a deferral at this time by the county. And then the estimated carryover, which we go through every year, and this is where revenues are exceeding our expenses, we predict to be $1.5 million. And so the total, we were requesting, we're looking at, I should say, new revenues of 4.626 million, and we're projecting 5.016 million on the revenue side. Now, if we go to the next slide, we'll see the adjustments that in light of the coronavirus that we anticipate seeing being reflected on the revenue side. Sales tax is a great unknown. We'll start to see with our first payment here in May, which will reflect March as activity for us, some indication of what our sales tax numbers may be impacted. But we've lowered them by approximately $2.8 million. Lottery funds, in listening to the state, listening to DOE, they're indicating that their lottery funds have started to slow down sales, and so we've lowered our revenues by about 25%, almost 20% to 25% by a million dollars. The ADM, we projected in at 9,855 students. We've revised that downward by 80 students to 9,775. That'll reduce our revenues by $518,000.
Mr. Krantz can interrupt you for a second?
Yes, sir.
That ADM, just want to make mention in terms of that real quick, is our ADM came in lower than expected in our March numbers, and it had been going up, and so, you know, we're not comfortable with that 9855. In fact, you know, the 9775 is about where we are right now, and, you know, there's some unknowns there in terms of ADM, you know, especially when you factor in Virginia Tech and not knowing what they're going to do in the fall. That could have a tremendous impact on the number of students that enroll in our schools. And so we're hesitant now to, we want to be a lot more conservative in terms of that number. And then two, you know, depending on the threat, who are to open up schools, there might be some parents who are hesitant to send their students back to school as well. And so, you know, we're hoping that it doesn't drop below that 9775, but I believe that we definitely needed to drop it to a much lower estimate than we originally expected. So, anyway, Mr. Krantz?
Yes, sir. The VRS employer contribution is still required right now in the governor's budget, and that's $701,000. We had proposed raises of 3.4 million, which consisted of the raise on the teacher's side and all employees, but also the $13 an hour increase on our custodial staff. We've taken that, as you can see, we've mentioned the word deferred, that it's still there. It's still the desire of the administration to go through. However, based off of the current information we have, we don't have the dollars today to proceed with that part of the plan, but we'd like for it to remain out there, depending on where revenues may be in the future. Okay? And then the proposed new positions. You've seen some requests that have come across that we funded with existing budget dollars, so this was new positions, and that would be based on the new revenues, so we deferred those positions, and the same thing with the raises. It's the intent of the administration, these were instructional positions, and to maintain, you know, the great gains that this district has achieved on the academic side. We believe that instructional positions may be needed going forward, depending on ADM, depending on the needs of the district. So, again, we put that out there as deferred, not to be taken off the table completely, but as revenues and the needs of the district, they could possibly come back.
And Mr. Krantz, can I add that too? And this is something I want to make note of as well. We're going to hold off, Mr. Krantz has identified, we've identified five operational positions and one central office position that we're going to hold off, and we're going to defer those positions in order to add to five of those teaching positions that are a necessity out of class size numbers. So we are actually going to add five of those teachers, but hold off on filling some of the operational positions at this point until we know more about the budget as the year moves on, because we have to start the year with the classroom teachers in place. Okay?
Yes, sir. So the total there that we see a reduction is 5.016 million, which is exactly equal to what we saw on the revenue side. So our net of the changes we're making to our budget are a zero, as you can see here on the schedule. Any questions? And there's a recap of the two slides.
And you all have a copy of the letter to the county administrator as well?
Yeah, it is attached.
Okay.
Can we get a copy of this update, too?
Brenda, is this?
Also, could you explain to those who might be listening what ADM means?
So that's called the Average Daily Membership. It's measured twice a year, once in September, at the end of September, and then again at the end of March. And the ADM is a number that the state uses to fund certain one of our state revenue numbers, such as basic aid, social security, retirement, SOQ-funded positions, the ADM is used in those calculations.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's make the motion to approve the budget letter for the submission to the county, then we can discuss more after motion and second.
Send move.
Thank you, Marty. I have a motion and second. Now, any further discussion, Board members?
I don't really have discussion, but I just need to make a statement because of how I'm going to vote. I know why we need to do this, and I understand what's happening, but I'm going to have to say no to taking away our teacher salaries or their increases, so I just have to say nay. Sorry.
I'm going to have to vote no for this, too. Again, I do understand, like Sue said, why, but we have not recovered from where, from 2008, 2009, 2010. And with everything that we are going through right now, I have this huge concern about what is going to be happening in the classroom to make sure that our students are where they need to be, are getting the support that they need, and we need to make sure that we're compensating people for the work that they're doing. We have custodians who are being stretched to the limit, positions that can't be filled, and to not give that raise would just be another slap in the face. I just cannot. I was not going to vote to approve the budget, as you all know, because I believe we need to be asking for more. You know, the county has been wonderful in stepping up and helping to close the gaps on to keep things moving forward for Montgomery County schools, and I truly appreciate that. And I don't think people, I don't think community really understands how much they, because it is their tax dollars, have had to step up because the Fed and the state are not doing what they need to do. And at this time, when everyone is getting some type of relief, public education needs to be getting some type of relief, too, and that is helping our teachers by paying them what they deserve and the rest of our employees, and making sure that we have extra bodies in place to support our students when they do return. So I just can't support it, you know, even.
You said that way better than I did, but I totally agree, and I think that at this time, when we have asked our teachers to put in so much extra time and effort, and I think a lot of people appreciate that. I know a lot of parents do, but it also realizes how difficult it is for everyone, but I, in good conscience, could never vote yes to a budget that does not reward our teachers.
I just.
Or other staff, for that matter. I mean, I agree, it's not just our teachers who keep our schools going.
I just want to clarify, I mean, I totally agree, you know, both Ms. Franklin and Ms. Cass. I just want to clarify that the increase and the positions are not actually taken off of our budget. It is just putting aside till county knows what state is giving. Because they don't know what state is doing, they are hesitant to commit, because once they commit, and if they don't have money, you know, under the law, they are responsible to make the ends meet, and they are worried about it. So it is deferred, it's not cut out of the budget. So I just want to make sure, I know you're probably aware, but the moment they see the money, they are willing to pay us what we ask for, that $1,055, so that we can actually give the 3% raise and get those positions in place the way we want it. So I just want to make that clear. I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything else.
Well, just as always, my concern for the custodians, because they're so underpaid, that it's not that I don't want anybody else to get the raise, but they're way, way, way under, and they don't even make above poverty living, and so I just want to make sure that we take care of them.
And again, I understand exactly what the supervisors are asking. I understand why, and I appreciate them having the conversation with us, because they don't have to do this, and I appreciate the relationship we have, but I also appreciate all of our employees, and I want to make sure that our students are going to get what they need to make sure they are where they need to be after we open schools.
You know, I agree with a lot of what everyone's saying. Our employees are important, and, you know, we've prioritized raises for the past four to five years, and it's still a priority. And as soon as we know that we're getting the money through sales tax lottery, that'll be the first thing that comes back, is actually the raises. You know, at this point, and two, the state's going to be looking at the budget again, even after they pass it, they're going to go back and take another look at it at the end of the summer, which has never really happened before. And they may make additional adjustments then, even after we've sent contracts out. You know, at this point, you know, one thing that we're presenting is a budget where everyone's going to keep their job, and so I'm glad that everyone at this point, as bad as the economy is, can actually keep their job, and folks are still getting paid. You know, I'm worried about later in the year it being worse than what we are projecting right now. And so, you know, if things do turn around quickly and the sales stack starts coming in like it had been, you know, then the first thing that will come back are raises for our employees, I promise you that. And I'm hoping very much so that that actually happens. But, you know, it's, we can't, and the locality stepped up, you know, they're.
Always have.
Yeah, they're guaranteeing us level funding from last year and sort of holding off on the 1.5 million now, just to make sure what the state's going to do. And so, you know, they have really, really stepped up, and so, you know, it'll be interesting to see what the state actually does. And so folks need to be talking to our state delegates, and our representatives at the state level. You know, they're the ones that need to step up for our schools at this time, but you're right. You know, our folks have been tremendous during this crisis, and we're still teaching kids and feeding kids, two very important functions of what we do. And I really believe that the raises should hopefully be there some future, and that the revenue is actually raised to be able to do that, because our folks definitely, definitely deserve it. You're right, Penny, we hadn't hardly, we finally, you know, are coming out of it, of the recession after 10 years, and now we're being hit again. And so that does make it difficult for everyone. I mean, two months ago, we thought we were going to really do well this year, and this happens, and so, but the Board of Supervisors are working with us, and they're just hesitant at this point, because once they pass a budget, they have to fund us what they say they're going to fund us. And so that's why they're hesitant, not because of their revenue, but mostly because of the state revenue. Then the state doesn't know, and we don't know what the sales tax is going to be coming in or the lottery. And so it's really sort of a shot in the dark right now. You know, Tommy has proposed or shown that we could have a $2.7 million reduction in sales tax. In reality, it could be $4 or $5 million by December if things do not turn around. And then, you know, we're going to have to start looking at possibly positions by second semester if it does not turn around. And so I'm really hoping things will come through. A meeting with the state superintendent this morning in our weekly meeting, one thing that he did say that, and Tommy, if you want to expand on this, if anything, you know more than I do, is the possibility of two to possibly three more stimulus bills coming through the federal government. You know, what we have in here is 1.5 million from the federal government, and so we're hoping that the federal government also will step up and fund us as well during this crisis. And there may be a couple more stimulus boosts coming our way in terms of federal dollars, which would help also until we get out of this mess. Tommy?
Yeah, so you said it, and you said it right. I mean, the federal government's getting pressure from education advocates that they need to address the funding issues that the K-12 school systems are having, and there's, you know, a big emphasis on getting dollars in. So we look hopefully that we'll get some additional money on top of that 1.55 million, I mean, the 1.5 million that we already will be receiving here very soon.
Yes, I listened to a webinar for the fourth stimulus plan, and I think they are trying to look for the sales tax gap of, you know, the states and localities and try to do something to balance that, and hopefully that will, that will, that will work out.
We can give the raise.
That's right. And I think that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was on a, on a call, Zoom, whatever, with Senator Warner yesterday, and that was one of the issues that I raised, is that public education needs really to be supported at this time, along with a couple of other board members across the state.
That's great. I think more they hear, the better for us. I think one difference, I mean, as a personal observation, where state is now versus 2008, 2009, state is in much better shape in terms of what they have money-wise. I'm hoping their allocation, even though there are a lot of unknowns, still is a better start than, I think, 2008, 2009 year, so I'm a little hopeful.
I think, I think for me, and I think everybody on this call agrees with the sentiment that was expressed by Ms. Franklin and Ms. Cass, but, you know, the way that I look at this, there are, as Karan said, there are still a lot of unknowns right now. Like Dr. Meyer said, you know, we can't be looking at these numbers as, you know, guaranteed numbers right now. And so the question becomes, you know, when I look around the country and see what's happening in other places, I see furloughs, I see pay cuts, I see people losing their jobs. I do think that we've done a good job over the last few years to, every year that I've been on the board, we have given salary increases of some kind. And, you know, I think the question now for us is what is the best thing that we can do that benefits our employees in the long run? And I think, you know, to the degree of being team players with the county, which has stepped up, I think that that is important, that we, you know, that we partner with them. And, you know, if for Ms. Cass and Ms. Franklin, and anyone else who wants to see something different, the question for me on this is if you don't, you know, we need to figure out some kind of a cushion or deferment. And I think where it makes the most sense, not because we don't care about our employees, but because of the uncertainty in the cushion that it gives us, the salary enhancements and these other positions that are listed in this draft letter are basically new spending over last year's spending, and so if we, if we're going to say no, we're not going to, this isn't the area where we're going to defer, then the question is, where do we come up with another, I don't even know what the total real number is, the total in the draft letter, if you add those two numbers up, could be as high as, you know, $4.1 million. So we would have to, it's not enough to say I don't agree with this. I think we'd have to come up with, where are you going to come up with another one and a half to $4 million in deferment? And I think at this point, you're going to either have to cut programs, or you're going to have to cut positions in order to get that money.
You know, in the budget process, every year, we make a request, and if the request is not funded, then we come back. And we do make cuts where we feel they need to be cut. So I appreciate them wanting to see what we can defer, and I like the word defer, but I just don't, I don't think we can defer anywhere. And that is the stand that I took from the very beginning with the budget, and many budgets in the past, is we do, we do the minimum that we can get by with, and I'm tired of the minimum that public education can get by with. Again, I'll repeatedly say and tell anyone, I appreciate the support that this county has given to the school system, but there comes a point where you draw a line and say, public education matters, and for all those parents and all the grandparents and everybody else who is having to help their students keep going with their education for the last two months, I'm sure there is a different understanding as to what actually goes on in that classroom. That's your one, two, maybe three students that you're dealing with, deal with 20 of them. Okay? So, you know, I'm not always known for being a team player, and I'm not saying I'm not being a team player here, but at some point, you got to step out and say, we've got to hold fast, because this is important. Public education is the future of this country. And if we keep sliding it and the people who keep public education moving in this country, we're going to be in dire straits. This pandamum, damum, won't look like anything compared to a country with folks who are illiterate and don't know how to function in the world.
I also, and just to tag on to what Penny is saying, that I understand what's going on now, and I realize there's, I work at Virginia Tech, and I know that we're looking at, you know, budget cuts and how we can reduce if we have to. I understand that. But I also know that it's been 12 years since the last recession, and we're still trying to get teacher salaries back to where they were. We're finally giving back to the middle school teachers their planning time that was taken away 12 years ago. And so it makes me wonder, going forward, you know, how are we going to, how are we going to recover from this? We're already behind. And like I said, I get it, I understand, and I. And I, and I know it's not the majority belief, but I just cannot, I just can't say yes. I think as Penny said, that, you know, we need to put public education first and we keep putting it behind other things. And I think somebody's got to stand up, so.
Any others, any other comments? I mean, again, I have to, I have to say that sending this letter is not going to say, or at least my understanding is, we're not, our teachers are not important for us or we're saying the public education is no longer important. It is just helping at this time to board of supervisors how to handle their stress. That's how I see it because the moment we don't defer those things, you know, they don't, they don't, they're not going to give any money. I mean, in the discussion, I don't know how many of you watched the board of supervisors when they asked us this, the deferring. I mean, initially, almost I was scared that they want to defer the whole $53 million county's share. And then, you know, it was more clear that, you know, within, within that, what item we can, you know, defer if possible till they know what they're going to get from the, you know, what their, their budget is going to look like. So I don't see this as a final, this is it, kind of a letter. It's just a, you know, pretty much helping them to help their budget putting together. As you know, they have not approved yet and they're delaying to approve because they're waiting to hear from the state. So it is just in between without cutting anything from, because they were initially going to fund us what we, you know, asked for them to fund us with. So it is still, I think that's still the understanding. It's just without seeing the money, it is hard to commit right now for them because they have a legal obligation. Otherwise, I don't know where they can find the money to fund us if they don't get the money. So, you know, that's, that's how I see it. Otherwise, I agree with, you know, Ms. Cass and Ms. Franklin, you know, that education should be number one. And we definitely, our employees have been working so hard for the past, however, weeks we've been in the, at-home, stay-at-home teaching situation. And I know a lot of parents were appreciating the teachers way more than they ever appreciated before because they realized that it is not easy to continue the education at home. And teachers are so valuable assets of the, of the community to begin with. But like also Mr. Chabaka said, at this time, I think everybody is worried about not having a job. So I think if we can maintain not, you know, letting anybody to go from our school system, I think it is already a blessing and a positive thing to do. I mean, from my family, daughter lost a job and a son cut a 40% pay cut. So it was just a little, you know, little window. And I'm sure there are tons of people, or 30 million, I think, at least in this situation. So yeah, so I think I have to support this letter so that we can help the board of supervisors to figure out their side of the story. But I definitely don't want to look like I don't support our teachers and I don't support the raises or I don't support education in general, so.
I think I'll reiterate, Ms. Karan, that I don't think that that's what's happening here. I think that, I think sending forward this letter, I think, in my opinion, increases the chances of what the long-term goal is. I think for me and probably hopefully for the rest of the board, and I think also for, in talking with Tommy and Dr. Meyer, which is hopefully what, what we were looking at anyway with the state was a 5% raise over a couple of years. I don't know exactly how that's all going to be impacted right now, but whatever we can get for our teachers from the state level and from the local level, I'm going to do everything that I can to fight for that. And, and I agree with Ms. Franklin. Actually, I think I'm, I've always been an advocate of the idea of actually putting forward a needs-based budget. This is what we need. And we did that this year and I don't think anybody's talking about cutting this. Ms. Franklin mentioned that this can, you know, that, that we ask for the money that we need and then they come back and they say, well, here's the money you're going to get. And then we deal with what we're going to be cutting after that. I think what's happening here is because of all the uncertainty, I think the board of supervisors is asking us for a little bit of a window into our thoughts and all of our meetings are public. So I don't think it's a big secret. I don't think that, you know, I don't, I don't envision that this is a real, a big stretch for us to say where, you know, where our priorities are and what we would do with additional money if and when we get it. So anyway, I'm going to support it.
Any other comments or questions and further discussion before we vote? If not, we can go for it. Do you want to roll call, Ms. Drake?
Sure, I can do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Chabaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
No.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Drake.
All right, thank you. The next thing we have to discuss tonight is a fee update. About middle of last year, we started looking at fees that were being charged in classrooms and in different schools. And of course, you know, one thing that I start to remind folks of is this is a free public education. And, and we were finding that that was not the case in certain schools around the division, that certain fees were being charged. And it's no, it's no fault of anyone's, these fees were, were needed to support the classroom instruction. And so we figured out ways to actually support classroom instruction and actually give the teachers what they need through our new supplies. And so we're real happy about that. So we're eliminating several fees. There are some fees that are still allowed, but we're trying to reduce some, those that are allowed as well. And Mr. Polly's going to discuss these with you tonight. Mr. Polly?
Yes, as Dr. Meyer said, we've been working towards eliminating as many fees as possible on the instructional side while still providing the adequate amount of instructional supplies to teachers and for student use. These are a little bit different fees. These are fees that have traditionally been charged by middle and high schools for as long as I can remember. A hall locker fee, a gym locker fee, an agenda and planner, parking passes, class dues. What we've discovered is over the years, now that we have built enough new and more modern facilities, the cost of maintaining lockers and the likelihood of replacing them anytime soon has been greatly reduced. And so we really no longer feel like we need to charge locker fees and for the hall or for the gym locker. So we, we being the secondary principals and Dr. Meyer and I met with them, we feel as if we can continue to operate without collecting any locker fees anymore. So those have been eliminated. The agenda and planner, that was a fee charge to provide students with paper calendars or planners, student planners. Those have been replaced by electronic means. So students use Google Classroom and Parent Portal and Student Portal. So the agenda planner is really no longer needed, so we've eliminated that expense. The parking pass, we, I can remember when we instituted parking passes, it doesn't seem that long ago. And we charged $11 across the division and it found that really we can maintain an adequate supply of hang tags and parking stickers and continually buy new ones by charging only $7. So it's not a great reduction, but we're looking for every penny we can save for parents and families. So we reduced that from 11 to seven. The freshman class and sophomore class, junior class and senior class dues, we did find those were being used and used for the benefit of students. I've listed just a few of the things in bullet form off to the right. We could just charge one great big fee at the senior year, but we charge a little bit at a time each year. And those are used to basically offset the cost of graduation items and prom items. I listed a few of them there. There are others. It also offsets the per person cost of the prom and after prom. And then schools use that to provide things for senior field day, senior picnics, graduation festivities and the like. And if there's any money left over at the end of the four years from, in that particular class's account, the class officers get together with their principal and can decide how that money is going to be used. Many times a class offers to purchase a gift for the school, benches or picnic tables or certain hall decorations or what have you, something to honor and memorialize the class. It could be a memorial for, for students or teachers who have retired or who we've, we've lost. Plaques Awards and scholarships, there's any number of things that the students and the principal can work out together to determine what, if any, balances left over can be spent on. Any questions?
Just a question, even though we don't require the agenda planner, is that something that they could buy if they choose to? I know some students enjoy having that on, in hand to be able to write things down on.
Yes, absolutely. I, it's funny because I still like to have.
Yeah, there's a lot of students that do, so I, I hate for that not to be available.
Yeah, this was a required thing school-wide, so that like, you saw it in middle schools where every student had to pay the $7 and had to use a certain planner. That's no longer the norm, but kids can certainly.
I've always agreed with the parking pass because that's a privilege to be able to drive to school and have a safe place to park your vehicle.
Right, that's certainly one that, that is, a student doesn't, the thought there is if a student can afford to have a car, they can afford the $7 for a parking pass.
I'm mute. I'm sorry. I realize I was muted. May I have a motion to approve the revised fee schedule as presented? If you have further questions, we may do that after the motion and second.
Second.
I have motion and second. Any more questions, Mr. Polly?
Thank you for analyzing this and making it equitable.
Yes.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Then all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? We approve our fee update. Thank you, Mr. Polly.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Karan. Next, our team continues to do a tremendous job in working through this crisis. And as in the past couple of meetings, we want to give you an update. And the first one update, Mr. Polly will give us, Director of Secondary Education. And, and, you know, we're actually getting pretty excited about graduation and what we are planning for our seniors this year. I think we're going to make it about as special as any graduation can be for any, for any group. So, Mr. Polly, would you start us off?
Sure. What you see there is a map, and I realize it's probably a little bit small for you to see all the great details. But this is the I-Lot at Virginia Tech, otherwise known as the Duck Pond Lot. Or if you've been around a long time, it's referred to as the Cage. And so this is a large paved parking area, the main area where you see the different road, the 10 different rows for graduates and their families to park. There are almost 1,500 parking spots there, it's 1,400 and change, but close to 1,500 parking spaces there. So we've worked with police from Virginia Tech and from Blacksburg and some emergency response folks to devise the best possible flow of traffic into and out of this area and how to stage cars. In fact, I'd like to point out that where these cars are going to be parked, it's better to not think of them as seats in an audience. It's really a staging area that we will use to bring cars through the line and in front of the stage. So essentially, every family will have a front and center seat, if you will, or view of the stage when their child walks across the stage to receive their diploma. So if you could just follow along, the, the yellow lines represent traffic flow into and out of the venue. Those are really something that the police department and the parking services and emergency folks recommended to us to have one primary entrance point up till the 15 minutes prior to the actual ceremony. Then they would close it. And there is down below in the lower right corner, a secondary entrance point for late arrivals, which will also double as an area for early arrivals for the next ceremony. As people arrive early and the first ceremony is not yet over, those folks can park in that same lot by the secondary entrance and then the police will route them back through onto Duck Pond Drive and back to the primary entrance at the beginning of the next ceremony. So once all the cars are parked in their rows and just, it says graduates and families parking, that would be the grad, the car that contains the graduate and any, anybody else that they want with them in a parked car next to them. And then all of those cars would move as a unit when a student is ready to go. We would bring them up to, you'll see a little four red numbers or four red circles with numbers. The first car will roll up to number one, give their name to the person standing there, the name of the graduate. That person will enter that name into a Google Sheet, which will be received at the stage, at the podium by the principal. That principal will call that student's name. The car will drive up to number two. The graduate will get out. And as the graduate walks up the steps to the stage, the car will proceed to number three at the other end of the stage. And then the graduate walks across, receives the diploma, walks down, down the stairs to number three, gets back in the car and the car proceeds to area number four. At number four, there'll be someone there to man that station and they will offer two options. They'll ask the driver or the, and/or the graduate, whichever it is, to ask them, do you want to go right and stay for the, you want to turn right and leave the venue by way of Smithfield Road? Or do you want to turn left and repark and remain for the remainder of the service, of the ceremony? The ceremony is also going to be broadcast through Facebook Live. So anybody in that venue who has a cell phone connection will be able to watch the ceremony through Facebook Live. There's a little blue square in the first row marked faculty parking. Right in the middle of that, there's a little blue square with an asterix. And that takes you to the notation that that's where there's an audio visual and technology table. So the whole thing will be recorded from that area, nice front row view. And folks will see that on Facebook Live. It's a quick go-through. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
And let me say this too, Carl. This is a tremendous amount of coordination has occurred already. We met the other day and pretty much we had two separate meetings going on. I had a meeting with the principals and senior sponsors to coordinate them. Mr. Krantz had a meeting with, basically it was the Virginia Tech Police Department and Parking, Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Montgomery County Police Departments, and also the Fire and Rescues from those localities as well. And the folks that are on the task force, and I had one individual from the task force say, in dealing with COVID-19 in this task force, this is the one thing that we're actually doing that seems positive. And so that task force is helping us put this graduation on. And they're, they're just doing an excellent job in helping us coordinate this. We are looking at not only live streaming on Facebook, but also either somehow broadcasting on the radio so folks can sit in their car. If you haven't been to this lot, it's hard to get an idea of how enormous it is. It is a huge lot. If you're on that back row, you need binoculars to see the stage. And so the good thing is, you know, you're going to better see the stage when you go by. And then too, what's positive about this is a graduate can have as many folks in their family come, as many cars as they want and they won't fill that lot up. Then the only thing we're asking families to do before they get there is they have to arrange their caravan of cars and vehicles prior to getting there so they can park next to each other. Because once they're pulling into park, they're going to be directed to park in the next space available by, in Virginia Tech Parking. Same crew that does football games, they're going to be parking our folks for us here. And the ceremonies will last about the actual. And the ceremonies will last about the actual. What we've asked principals and schools to do is to make the the beginning of the ceremony last no more than thirty minutes and then after that. Diploma should be handed out within thirty minutes of it starting. Because if you think of Blacksburg High School, two hundred and eighty graduates. It probably will take about thirty seconds for each graduate to to pull up, get out, walk across the stage. Because so it's gonna take a little time for them to get out. We're also are looking out for the welfare of our principals and our staff. They will be wearing masks, they will not be shaking the hands of the of the graduate, they'll be placing the diploma on a table. So that the graduate can actually pick that diploma up as they're as they're walking across the stage. Want to thank Christiansburg, the town of Christiansburg is actually. For that day loaning us their states, they brought a brand new stage for their festivals. And they're giving us that stage for the that day and setting that stage up for us. And so we're really thankful for the town of Christiansburg to to do that for us as well. And so it is, it is just a tremendous undertaking and a I just want to thank everyone who's involved in this, it's just absolutely amazing. What questions do you all have?
Well, I was I was just thrilled when I got your message about this because I was just heartsick. Thinking about. Families not being able to be together to be able to celebrate. And to have as many as you want. That's that's a, that's a, that's a big one, especially for Christiansburg. Who can be so limited at times. So will the families, would anyone be able to get out of a car and take a picture?
No.
Have to stay in the car.
Yeah, we're asked, we're gonna ask whoever's doing the photography for the families to 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 be on the right side of the car. But yeah, we're we're gonna have to be. The only only folks that will be allowed to be outside of the cart at any point during this time. Are the graduates when they're getting out of their car to to receive their diploma and the workers who are working the actual ceremony. And we've we've actually had to work with the Health Department. On this, Jason Garrettson is on this call and Jason, do you want to say anything about? We've actually had to run all this by the Health Department and they've sort of set some guidelines for us and how we need to do this, so we're gonna make this work, Jason.
Yeah, I I think you said it very well, Dr. Meyer. Going through the task force, you know, we already have law enforcement, Virginia Tech. And even the National Guard.
Turn off, turn off your video, could you do that?
Yes, sir.
Maybe hear you better. All right, go ahead.
I'm sorry, is that better?
Yes.
Yeah, I I think you said it well, Dr. Meyer, the 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 task force. Already had Virginia Tech, all the local law enforcement officers, the Health Department, the National Guard. Just just in from the beginning of the plan, VDEM is a part of the plan. So they really are aware of what we're doing regards to social distancing and any of the other plans that are being made. So we have, we have their support in regards to the plans that are taking place.
And and thanks, Jason, I failed to mention National Guard will be helping that day as well. Also, if you see the black line right there in front of the stage, that is a gated area. And that's where the teachers are and you will and you can actually park. So all you'll need to do is just at when you get there, when you turn left into the parking lot, you'll go right into that area and you'll have a. A front row view of the and teachers as well as well of the ceremony. Okay.
So is is there a covering in case of rain?
Yes, the stage has a cover on it. So we are making a an alternate date, which would be the next day on that Sunday if we were to run into lightning. You know, if there were, if there were to be lightning, we would shut it down and then move it to the next day. And that's more likely to occur in the afternoon and evening programs, obviously. Any other questions?
Well, I just want to think this is like amazing, the detailed and. Cool way of celebrating, I think, and I'm so glad all our high schools using the same field too. Because initially we weren't sure, you know, big high schools do something different than the. Small high schools and you know, or what they can do, what they can't do. Well, you know, how much space they have in their parking lot, so this is like, I'm thankful to Virginia Tech allowing us and. And the whole task force working for our students to celebrate them, I think I'm very thankful. This is exciting.
Yes, and and we're, like, we're really excited. This is taking some expenses away too from our schools. Graduations are expensive when we rent stages and sound equipment for all schools. So whereas a central office, we are actually taking on the expenses and the schools not to pay anything for anything that will be a cost here too. So we're saving our schools some money in doing this and in giving everyone, talking about equity, it's gonna be. Exact same type of graduation for every graduate in the county and we're excited about that. And we did a survey too, we failed to mention that. We did a survey, we surveyed teacher, I mean, excuse me, parents and seniors. And we gave them two different choices and this was a choice that actually came out on top. Okay, and actually for every school and every group of parents and every group of seniors wanted this option as opposed to the other that we were offering.
So I I I know there's folks on both sides, that's what I'm gonna say. The lively celebrations that can go on with our seniors. I'm gonna miss that, so I I'm sure. That our students will get creative. How will that be managed or not?
Well, we're we're gonna expect everyone to stay in the cars. You know, while they're on this property. And so hopefully folks would adhere to that. And and you know, we will, you know, we we have to adhere to to social distancing and and. And and how it's been laid out by the Health Department. For this to work and so hopefully, Mr. Polly?
Yeah, we are encouraging or telling students that more than welcome to to decorate their vehicles. We talked about that, so they they can certainly decorate their vehicles, I'm sure there'll be a lot of horn honking.
What's that, Jamie?
Where will there be a place for us to come and show our support or will we need to watch it Facebook Live?
No, you you're gonna get right there in front of that, between that black line and the stage, we're gonna have parking for.
Okay, I I heard you talk about that, but I didn't know if that included us as well.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep.
Thank you.
I might be camping from eight AM till five thirty PM. It's a long day.
I was just wondering about facilities.
We're still in the process of talking about how that's gonna look and what we need to do there. Because obviously our workers will need facilities and those of us will be there for twelve hours.
There's actually facilities, my my husband works for Blacksburg Transit and. The the bus operators can't go get into any of the buildings, so they had to put porta potties around campus so they could use the restroom during the day.
Yeah, we're, it's Tommy, you're looking into that, I believe.
Yes, sir, we're making arrangements with Virginia Tech and their contractor, we've already started the process today.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything, Tommy, you want to add to it? Because you're sort of a different angle.
No, sir, y'all hit all the the points.
And we're making sure we have lights there near the stage for Christiansburg in case it gets a little dark right there at the end. Arranging them as well. And so, okay.
Have individuals with the parking to ensure parking flows smoothly. Virginia Tech has a team that does that for a living and they're very good at it, so they're gonna work with us on doing that. It's a total team effort.
All right, thanks, everyone.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, next, Mr. Goodwin.
Hey, thank you. As is with the case of our Chromebook initiative, our MiFi for underprivileged students initiative has placed us well ahead of many other counties. We've been able to supply MiFi's to many families in need and project to extend our efforts next year. In addition, we have finished up our exterior Wi-Fi project. So that every school has at least one high-traffic area outside of the building with Wi-Fi coverage. Once again, I would like to thank Comcast for their wonderful efforts in providing Wi-Fi across the act. Public Wi-Fi across the county. We continue to work with schools to produce flash drives with the assignments loaded from teachers to underserved students. Interesting, on the Chromebook help desk side. It's, we continue to clip along and do repairs oftentimes while parents are waiting. But our repairs are down somewhat and I kind of have to think that that is a result of the lack of. Travel between classrooms and on buses, so this there's, we're seeing a lot less breakage day to day. This crisis has shown how much technology has become the medium for instruction. And I'm proud of how the men and women in the technology department have risen to the challenge. It's always been a pleasure to work with these individuals. Thank you, any questions?
Harvey, I have a quick question.
Sure.
I've had some people ask, do we have a plan in place yet for? As far as returning the Chromebooks back to school once school is officially over?
Actually, we're going to let the Chromebooks stay out this year, so.
Okay.
We're gonna leave them with the students, we're gonna continue to have the help desk open. So as they break, and it's kind of my, the members of my department have always kind of favored that idea. Because you know, learning is not just bell to bell. So we kind of like the idea of having a learning instrument in their hands.
I like that. Thank you.
And tell them, Harvey, what we're gonna do with seniors and their Chromebooks.
Seniors, we're going to, we've have for the past years. Ads, seniors can buy for a nominal charge their existing Chromebook and keep it. So we're gonna continue to have that offer out there. We usually see about half of them come back in that the students no longer want. And in which case we will refurbish them and use them in the elementary schools to beef up our inventories there.
Okay. Any other questions for Harvey?
I'm I'm excited about the the deal for next year with the significant additional MiFi. Units, I'm I'm assuming that will put us in a pretty good position to. Should we have to spend any part of next year online? I think that should help with the equity piece, is that? Is that a correct assumption on my part?
Yes, it gets us very close to the level, the county is at currently at about seven percent of the population without internet. So if you think about our population, we'll have over four hundred MiFi's. We're pretty much right there, so we're about providing internet to every student that we can.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, we're excited about that and he's gonna give you an update on how we're starting to plan for next year already. Which which includes that piece also, so. Okay, thanks, Harvey.
Thank you, Harvey.
All right, Tommy?
Yes, sir, operationally, it's kind of short, we've now reached the three hundred thousand meal mark. We are running at about a five percent positive margin. So for every dollar revenue we earn from the meals we distribute, we're putting, we're making about five cents. This past week, Friday was National Heroes Day. And so we recognized our heroes being our school nutrition teams who. Have not missed a beat during this process with donuts on Thursday and Friday because of our AB Day. And that was very well received, a lot better than I thought it would be, I thought it'd be positive, but it was very well received. And everybody on the team appreciated everything we had done. We've received donated masks, those have been received and distributed. In addition, the district purchases, we had, I think, believe a tow job in past twenty-eight thousand mask. Lost masks, those have been received and they're also being distributed. So all personnel within the district are have the the devices necessary to be safe. In the performance of their job duties.
Any questions for Scrantz?
Yes, just thank you, thank you, thank you. Million times, thank you for all those individuals. Every day I'm hearing positive comments from the parents or or just the community members seeing kids. Taking those meals.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Switaker?
Well, you know, we're beginning to look at, I think, you know, as Mr. Chabacher just mentioned, what will next year look like? So what we know right now is we don't know what that'll look like, but we want to be prepared for whatever that situation is and so we're we're starting to plan for that. The first thing I have for you, there's an overview of something that we actually heard about today in our call and was released by the governor yesterday. So he's put out a plan that's called Forward Virginia Blueprint. And it's real brief document, but it speaks about the different phases. And so it says phase one would be two to four weeks or longer from the start. Which would include things like physical distancing, enhanced cleaning and disinfection, enhanced workplace and safety. So in phase one, we would not be returning to school. Phase two would be two to four weeks or longer after phase one. And that would be mandated staying, well, not mandated, but staying home for the vulnerable. No social gatherings of more than fifty, continued social distancing, continued no teleworketing, face covering is recommended. So we would not return to school in phase two. So then, you know, the presentations that they prepared said to move into phase three, we have to look at. Or they'll be looking at no evidence of rebound for a sustained period of time. They did not indicate what that sustained period would look like. So they said a longer term could be ten to twelve weeks away or more. So that's kind of, you know, the latest that's out of the governor's office. We meet once a week, it used to be twice a week, we have a conference call, we actually don't meet, we listen in. To the state superintendent, Dr. Lane, we had that call this morning. And on the call, we had the opportunity to speak to Secretary Carney. And he shared with us about the return to school task force that has been formed by the governor's office. And that that group is working on providing some options and looking at different ways in which we might return to school and they'll provide that guidance to us. So they're looking at it in three different ways, one would be if we return at regular time, you know, a summer return. Then we would have a fall return or a late fall return. We don't know what those dates look like, but those are kind of the three options that that task force will be working on and sharing more information with us later. We're also looking to get more information from the Virginia Department of Health. To learn more about what stage may look like from their perspective for students. So with all of those pieces in mind, we're kind of, you know, thinking about, well, what will we do? And so the actions that were taken, Brenna, you can go ahead. On those are a variety of things, first, an ongoing focus on ensuring students can access the content from home. So as Harvey shared with you, the technology department is consistently working with our families, they're answering the calls, they're making sure. That we are being able to get the content out to our students. For those who are not accessing the content at the schools, they're reaching out to students, they're trying to touch bases. And figure out what are those factors that are prohibiting them from being able to access that content. We are in the process right now of developing a survey that we can send out to our teachers so that we can identify both what are their needs. It's very different to have a long extended periods of instruction where you're engaging back and forth with kids, you know. Our teachers have done an amazing job, they've hit the ground running and we want to see from them, what else do they need from us? So that we can support them and give them the tools that they need in terms of their teaching. In that type of environment and additionally, what else do they just need from us? How are they doing? We want to get a gauge on how things are going, see if there's other human resources that we need. The human resources to get out to them, if there's other supports we can provide to our teachers. We're gonna continue to utilize data to identify how we can additionally support our kids. So say we didn't return in the fall, how are we able to make sure that? Students who are having a difficult time getting assignments completed now are getting those assignments completed and then they are continuing to learn. What will that look like for kindergarten, first and second grade? Might that look like some type of a different model than perhaps? For for different grades and how do we look at those, what what types of different? Options do we need to offer based upon our student needs? So the elementary leaders are gonna begin to examine that, Dr. Wickham is gonna start some work with them in that area. And we're just really starting to gather all of this information and just be ready in case, in case things look a little different. What questions can I answer for you all?
Okay, so it was kind of mentioned early on. If we have families who don't feel safe coming back when we're able to reopen. And I know if they if they're not enrolled in the school system or have not. And I know if they, if they're not enrolled in the school system or have not come back to school. Um, we're not obligating it, right? But the reality
Guidance would come from the state. So, you know, in terms of attendance, it's compulsory. So there are certain rules that are in place right now that we would have to follow. If they were to waive those, then we certainly would comply. You know, in this, when this all started, they, they did ask us to be lenient, to be understanding that if families were, um, having to hold a child out because they wanted to quarantine them, you know, to do everything we could to the fullest extent to work to those families. So I would, I would think that the state will certainly give us guidance when we're looking at, you know, they're saying what that task force is doing. I think that task force will speak to those things because any rules that would have to change law will have to come um, from our legislators in that compulsory attendance. We, we have to meet those mandates at this point.
Okay, thank you. I just, um, I just have a lot of concerns.
I think they will too, and I think they'll probably provide us, you know, I can't speak to it, but I, I think they will work to do everything they can to help families feel safe um, and not penalize. You know, the goal is for kids to be educated. So I would foresee that they're gonna really try to think about that piece of it.
Ms. Franklin, can you expand on your, this, this is something I've been thinking about too, and I'm just wanting, can you expand on, on your thoughts a little bit on, are, are you worried that we're gonna lose a large number of kids who won't come back if and when we reopen in the fall? Because their parents aren't feeling comfortable?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's part of it. But my, I'm more concerned that those students are going to be able to stay on track in some kind of way. So when they do return, they're gonna be ready to go. My daughter, you know, four kids, three of them in school, and the youngest has some respiratory issues that when things get bad, it's bad. And she is concerned about her, the older children, bringing things home as, you know, as they always do, you know? But this is at a, at a different level. So she is really weighing what's gonna be best for her family. They're in Georgia, right? But, um, I'm sure there are other parents who are thinking the exact same thing. And I'm just very concerned about our students who may not have the support that they need, may, may need more support. Even with, you know, having access, it is not the same thing as being in that classroom. And I'm just really concerned about our students and our educators and staff being able to deal with all of this. I'm, I'm just, I'm just very nervous about how we're moving forward.
Right. And, and I agree, Ms. Franklin, I mean, we're all concerned too, and we're all nervous and you know, uh, this is all new for everyone and, and, you know, we had a, in our leadership meeting today, we had a, an in-depth conversation about, you know, equity. If, you know, there's a lot of talk about um, social distancing in classrooms. I've heard folks on news networks say things like, well, um, let's cut the class sizes in half. You know, and of course, that would be just absolutely wonderful, wouldn't it? But of course, we need twice as many teachers. Uh, or keep kids six feet apart in the classroom. Well, you know, our classrooms aren't large enough to do that. Um, but then they talk about, well, maybe bring some kids in and some kids not, you know, and, and one thing that led, that our conversation um, led to today was, you know, looking at, um, a model possibly if we would have to do something like that where we are focused on the kids that are being successful in an online atmosphere like this versus those that are not. You know, we had to do something like that where, where we would want to only bring a few kids in at a time. You know, bringing in the kids who are not being successful, who need that extra help, those that are being successful in this type of online atmosphere are through Zoom or Google Hangout or whatever. You know, um, maybe that's something we could do. There's a special education aspect to this too. And so, um, you know, I, I guess what I'm saying is if we're not all back in school in the fall and we have to do something different. You know, one thing that we're committed to is doing something different than we've been doing for the past, um, you know, six or seven weeks. It, it's not gonna be like we've ended school. Uh, we're gonna have a new group of students, every teacher will, and, uh, it, it's gonna be new to them and you know, we might have to do something different, but it's gonna have to be more than what we've been doing. Um, you know, you, you know, in the past, um, seven or eight weeks, even though we've been doing the best we can, I think now if we start preparing now, we can be prepared to be better. That's why the professional development aspect, we're surveying the teachers, is something that Andy talked about. You know, what PD do teachers want to be better at delivering online instruction? And so we're gonna, you know, we're asking teachers for that. And, um, because I, that's something that I think our teachers, you know, we're, we're, a lot of them do not feel comfortable doing this. So there's some things out there that we can do to, to help teachers get better. It's tools that they may not know about. And our technology department is, uh, working on that now. And so I look forward to getting that survey out and getting information back from teachers to, to get some guidance from them as to how we can best serve kids. Um, when or if, when they come back or if they don't come back. So, um, we'll be, um, it, we're, what we're doing, we can prepare now. I think the number one thing is we have to be online. The thing we're doing now is we're securing the MiFi devices. That's huge because if we waited till August to do that, available. Yeah. So we're on top of that right now.
So would it be a possibility for, um, students to, I guess, to zoom into their classrooms?
Yeah, absolutely. That's what we'd like to do. Possibly if, if we want it to be um, a, a face-to-face in Zoom just like this where the teacher is talking to their kids and doing direct instruction like this, if me be. Um, you know, we might get into situations where there's possibility that the students may get sick. Um, and, you know, I think what, what we've seen is we're looking at education through a different lens now and with some possible opportunities. Um, you know, I was just, I, I was talking to, uh, Mr. Hussman, our director of CTE the other, just yesterday. And the conversation came from, started with, um, there's, for instance, a, a program in Eastmont High School where there are only six kids who signed up for it. And we really can't staff those six kids. And so from that, we're going to, we're, we're starting to feel so comfortable with this type of platform. We're gonna get those six kids where the teacher doesn't have to move from one of our large high schools. We're gonna pipe that, those kids into another classroom at Blacksburg High or Christiansburg High. You know, and so we're looking at buying more, um, Google, uh, the swivels. The swivel is basically, we, we used it some, but we want to use it even more. Um, the teacher wears the device around their neck. There's a camera. The camera follows them wherever they go. And they, they end up in the Google chat room just like this. So, um, we can maybe even stop. We have a lot of teachers that are itinerant teachers. So hopefully we can stop teachers moving as much and actually, um, do more virtual uh, types of instruction like this. And, um, our, our kids are fine with it. A lot of kids are fine with it. Not all, but there are a lot. Um, you know, our, our staff are the ones who, who need, uh, to, um, to probably have to have some professional development and how to do it. We have several that have already been doing some of this already, um, before now. And so, um, I, I think we see some opportunities.
And I think as we, um, as we look at, uh, budget and as we look at some of the flexibility that we have in the budget, and Tommy was talking about, you know, possible other, uh, monies maybe even coming our way. I mean, I think one of the things, uh, uh, as we, I mean, there's a lot of variables that are there, right? Between the ADM and the money available from different sources and whatnot. But I mean, I, I, I think one thing that we should, uh, maybe at least keep in the back of our heads here in the next few months is, is that the likelihood that doing all of this stuff that we need to do may require more staff in a different way maybe than we had envisioned, right? Those extras. I'm, I'm all for the extra positions and I hope we get more, but I think we, we may have to think about, I mean, I don't know what you would call them. I mean, we have a name already now for instructional aids, but I, I could see teachers, um, you know, i- if you could give them a, uh, uh, give somebody, uh, shared between, you know, several classrooms to maybe work a little bit more one-on-one with kids. If, if we're in a virtual setting, work a little bit more one-on-one with kids and stuff like that, basically offload the teacher maybe from having to do some of the one-on-one work or something like that. I, I don't know. But that's something that, that I've thought about. I don't know if, if that's something that, that, that you guys have, have talked about in your meetings.
Uh, we haven't at this point yet, but I, I think, uh, you know, we like to look at all options, but we have some, uh, what's called, uh, early right hip. Um, teachers, which means they, they retired on a certain incentive we have where they usually volunteer for, uh, not volunteer, substitute. You know, perhaps could we use them in a different way to help align them with students and, and get those individuals? Um, you know, they're not going to be substituting if we're not here in the classroom, but they still need to fulfill that. We could certainly, you know, look at things like that to help bridge that gap. And, you know, I think every idea is something we need to look at because we certainly need to make sure, um, you know, if it's something that we especially can do within what we have available, I think we, we need to look at those things to meet the needs of our students.
There, there are a lot of, um, questions to be answered. And, and we realize that and a lot of it, we, we need to wait for the state to, to, to move along as to what, uh, what they're gonna allow us to do or not allow us to do. So we're preparing a little at a time.
Lot of fun loans.
Yep. Any other questions?
No, I'll just, I'll just say with, with all the zooming and everything else, there's a social aspect, um, that I hope we're not gonna get further away from than what we are already. So we don't know how to interact with each other. It's, it's hard enough already. And even though I don't really like to, you know, I like to be by myself, but, you know, wh- when I need to, we need to do it, right?
Yeah. I think definitely I'm done with, um, social distancing. I'm ready to go out and meet people.
Okay, thank you all.
The next item board members, unfinished business. Any matters of unfinished business at this time? I am moving on to new one. New business. Any matters of new business? Moving along to announcements and informations. Any announcements? One thing I would like to see, I saw it on, I think I saw it on Facebook by Christiansburg High School. And then I saw it on tweet, uh, Twitter, uh, as well. The Christiansburg High School, uh, counseling department did a great, uh, mental health video and, and posted, and I so appreciated the, the video and, and the, the efforts of our school counselors. I hope, uh, other, uh, schools will do something like that, maybe because this is the mental health month. Or because everybody needs mental health help nowadays with this social distancing. But, you know, I really enjoyed and I think I needed, I appreciate, so I did share and thank them. So if you have a chance to look at it, do so. It feels good to hear that you are not alone and, uh, we're all in this together. And even though you know those things, it's nice to hear from, from somebody else telling you that it's okay to be not okay.
One thing we, uh, want to talk about, um, is a- a- as, as we know, it's our board retreat is
You wanna go to agenda prep and then we'll, we'll be there. Here we go.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem. Yeah.
Your announcement for agenda prep.
Yes, now we are in agenda prep. So go ahead, uh, Dr. Meyer.
Yes, ma'am. Um, is, uh, the board retreat isn't gonna happen in June, uh, for obvious reasons. And so, um, what I proposed, and that's usually that first meeting in June, is that we still had the first meeting in June. Um, for, uh, to start my, the, so I can present to you all a closed session, the self-evaluation piece um, that I usually would do at the retreat. And so, um, you know, what, what I'd ask is, you know, the question is, you know, do we have to wait till seven o'clock to do it? You know, is there, you know, of course, it's dependent upon your schedules. You all can get back. Can we do it earlier? You know, even if it's six o'clock or four, five o'clock, you know, of course, it depends on your work schedules and that kind of thing. And so, um, uh, of course, we'll have to figure out, you know, the retreat, you know. We might not be able to do it this year. And one thing that was gonna happen at the retreat that we might have to either, we might have to do some type of retreat at some point once the, um, strategic plan is actually passed. So, uh, goals can be prioritized. Um, our action plans can be prioritized under each goal. And, uh, but we don't know when that's gonna happen yet, uh, because we've decided to wait on the strategic planning piece until we can actually get our team back together. I think it's important for us to be together for that, for that piece. And so, um, so anyway, so the first meeting in June, we'll still have it. Um, it'll mostly be a closed session and, um, and, and just, you know, I guess letting us know, you know, what's the earliest you all can meet that day? And so we can, we can go through that.
Well, because we put that day as a retreat, you know, you, you know, in my, in my calendar, it's eight to four retreat day. So, um, I don't know how other board members are feeling. So I wa- I was keeping it free all day kind of thing because I was supposed to be retreat, but I don't know how, uh, rest feels about at what time is good to meet for going through, um, or hearing, uh, your self-evaluation. I, I'm flexible, so.
Are we talking about, are we talking about the second or the fourth?
The
The second.
Second.
Second, okay.
Yeah.
And usually, and that, that's about a two-hour, you know, we have an holiday retreat. Have other things on there, but that piece usually takes about two hours. And so
That is correct.
About two hours to, to do that piece.
So, so we still, we wouldn't have a retreat, but you wanted to do the evaluation. And we, this, this would take place, um, in place of our first meeting, right?
Yeah, it always, you know, the retreat always takes place in our first meeting anyway. So basically, it's, it's, it's just that, that meeting as always, where, you know, at the beginning, we always start off with the self-evaluation piece. And I can go through all the things that have been happening in the school division for the year. And so we would just do that piece first. That, that would be all we would do, um, at that, at that meeting.
If, if it's not a, if we don't need a whole day, I, I'd rather not take a full day off from work if I don't have to.
Yeah, and that's what I figured you all.
Especially I'm in, I'm in a new job. So I'd, I'd prefer if we, if there's not a reason to take the whole day off, I'd rather save it for something else. So
Sure.
Um, I mean, I could do e- earlier than seven. I could do it, I could take, you know, maybe at like four or five, but I wouldn't want to, I couldn't, I'd rather not do it any earlier than that.
Yeah, and that's fine. It's only, it, it should only be a couple of hours. Anyway, so, you know.
We'll let you or Brenda know, um, our, or we want to decide right now.
It's a, I don't, I don't know. Um, is, is five too early or do we need to go at six?
I can do, I can do five.
I can do five.
I can do five.
I can do five, fine.
Uh, Jamie?
Um, what day are we talking again?
Tuesday, the second, June.
Yeah, Tuesday's good. Uh, the second of June.
Yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So five o'clock it is. That would make the meeting at five o'clock and do that, appreciate it.
Sounds good.
Thank you all.
Miss Drake, can you adjust our calendar entry? Thank you.
And the follow, oh, go ahead.
No, um, with that time, could we have just a little snack or something there?
Well, we're, we're gonna probably do it Zoom.
Zoom? Really? I don't think we'll be able to get back.
I was hoping that he didn't think so.
Geez.
Hey, I'm really trying not to have a comment on this getting back to work thing, so.
Yeah.
I agree. One hundred percent.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't know. I mean, we'll just have to wait and see, you know, what, what it looks like. And what we're all comfortable with. I don't care. It doesn't matter one way or the other.
I mean, we could, if, if we can, if all of us can be there and that's what, um,
Eight of us.
Eight of us? That's less than ten.
We can sit.
And we can, so, yeah. In our, in our, uh, what are we calling it? Training center? What are we calling that?
Uh, operation center.
Operation center.
Operations, yeah. Oh, please, not Zoom. Please, please, no.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, I guess we'll look at it.
And we can wear masks.
I don't see any problem doing this. I mean, aren't we under
We're still under a state of emergency.
Until, until, uh, Jan-, uh, until June tenth.
Yeah.
Not until March fourth, until May fourteenth.
Uh, May, okay. Uh, May, okay. And this, this, we don't have to make a decision right now. Can we wait? Just see how things progress?
Hopefully we can meet in person.
Yeah. But I, you know, I don't want to force it either.
May fifteenth, it goes back to ten and under.
Yeah, fifteen.
And everything's opening.
Yeah.
Right.
Fifteenth. Trust me.
That's
I'm gonna be poor by June.
You guys, you know, we, we can make a decision or we can just leave it up to the individual, you know, how you like to. I, I can do the presentation. Were you sitting in front of me or are you sitting here?
I want to sit in front of you.
Oh, that's cool. Thanks, Penny. I appreciate that.
Maybe the last time you hear that.
No, that's okay.
Whatever, whatever we'll do, we'll have to do the same thing on June ninth when we decide, um, without Dr. Meyer, when we decide, uh, you know, or finalizing the evaluation. So whatever plan we come up with for June second, we can do the same plan for June ninth.
Okay. All right.
Sounds good.
And that's as long as it doesn't get changed again, so.
Right, that's correct. Uh, if nothing, nothing else, I think we are ready to get into closed session. Are we all good about anything else? Uh, next order of business is closed session. May I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss one personnel matter as authorized by section two point two dash three seven one one of Court of Virginia?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we are in closed session and we'll wait till.
Okay, Danny and Annie will-
From Brenda.
Will stay. Uh, thanks, Jason and Carl.
Thank you for, yeah, thank you.
Bye.